Okay, good evening. The hour is upon us. Let us start. Welcome back from a long hot summer. It continues to be a long hot summer. It's a hundred in Nashville today. Aren't you glad you're here?
Yes, sir. It's only nine six.
We have a couple of new members here, Kyle and Kathleen.
Kathleen, hi.
So our first order of business is to look at the approval of minutes from the seventeenth of June, or June seventeenth, if we prefer. What I did notice was a strategic mistake at the time with that big word, the eighteen. Instead of today, it was should have.
Yes, I will shoot that.
Any other comments or questions about the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Certainly. Motion to approve effective by Dexter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion is carried and the minutes will change the date in advance. So we have no guests who signed up for comments, so we'll skip that. One that you all been waiting for, my forty-five minute report. Which I actually do not have a whole lot, so it's possible you all just passed out. There is a, there's been our strategic plan group met a few weeks ago, and that's, I'll defer that to Dustin here. That's, he's got a draft of the strategic plan coming up. So there's a trustee workshop that should be in your email basket. I actually signed up today, Liz. So September twenty-fifth, it was trustee workshop to go and get a lobster dinner and all of that. And that's in Frost, that's in Frostville, Tennessee, from nine thirty to eight thirty, something like that. Liz can describe that a little later. So that's, I'll never have to be in, so I feel like I should know. I actually worked on that library when I was taking construction about twenty-five years ago. So I've seen it when it was a concrete slab. So that's kind of neat. And then last Friday, we had a meeting here for Ed Harmon, who donated two hundred thousand dollars to the foundation. So we all met here and dispersed that check to the, that, so that's kind of neat. So I'm not sure what the money will be useful, that'll come through the course. That concludes my report. So we will move on to Dustin's with Ed.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody. And I really appreciate all you guys coming. This has been a fun and very chaotic two months. Just to kind of go over a couple of things for Athleen and Kyle. The board initially asked for a workshop example of notes of some of the progress I've been making in the six months in my interim. And that's what the status summary is right here, just to kind of highlight what I've been covering. I've definitely, in the past two months, I've definitely taken on less of a listener role and more of an active participation and advisor role. I've been collecting plenty of data to help with the strategic planning, taking an active role in different departments to help make sure that whenever I actually ask some of the staff what to do, that I kind of know a little bit of what I'm talking about. So that was a fun little playback. It's working the desk a little bit. I've been hosting booths for the public to get to know me, and I've met one-on-one with several members of the public as well as several organizations so that they can get to know me, express their concerns, show what the library is that they would like to see. I'll be meeting with the City of Maryville soon and with the city manager as well to kind of go over some of those in addition. I've taken on two more additional committees in the past two months. So the Maryville Design Committee for the Downtown Maryville Alliance is one. I've taken on more of a role in that with the city to kind of help with the structure of what we want to see with that gateway between Maryville College and the library. I've also taken on a role for an active advisor with the Friends Groups for the Tennessee Library System. So I'll be the delegate, that's kind of the non-Friends person, to help with relationships between Friends and boards throughout the state of Tennessee. In the time for the director's report, we have hired four new employees. Two of them came from patron services, or I'm sorry, we will be hiring four new employees. We have hired three. Two are in patron services, one is from children's, and one will be leaving us from the cafe. One was an eternal promotion to full-time, two left us to pursue full-time employment, and one was a retirement. One of the people that left for full-time literally left us so that he can make trains, like literal commercial trains. I'm very excited to see that. In addition to that, I've expanded our internships. Summer has been taking on a little bit more of a role to increase the number of internships that we have here, help with day-to-day operations, help give people a little more experience, and also help us with some places. So we recently, we've always been helping with the Bono Scholars for Maryville College, and we had more than five people request to join us, and we only had five slots. So there's now a waitlist of people that are wanting to come and join us. That was kind of fun to see. We'll try to grow this program to other schools as we have the ability to expand. I didn't want to break summer in the first couple of months, so. For programming, summer reading is done. I think all of us can breathe a sigh of relief, to be honest with you. To say that we were busy would be an understatement. In June and July, we circulated forty-five thousand items, so roughly the same as the population of Maryville and Alcoa in 2024. Children's recorded a high of seventy-two children in one storytime. That was not with the parents. So I don't know how they did it. Adult participation was up for storytimes. It was up seventeen percent from last year. The furthest away that completed their summer reading prizes came outside of San Antonio. I'm sure they didn't fly in for the programming, but who knows? Programming still continues to be a hit. For those of you that have not been able to attend the summer hot nights, we had one recently that was a Rue de Bayou, which was Cajun swamp pop. I've never even heard of it before, but we had such a large crowd that people, we had to pull in more seats. By the end of it, we actually had a conga line that started. It was very impressive. The library and the IT department have partnered with the East Tennessee Development District to administer a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that's designed to train low-income and middle-income patrons on computer literacy. It was initiated by the IT department, but the program is going to be taught by our library. So they'll buy the equipment. We already have the infrastructure to be able to help teach the people. Low- and middle-income people that will have a challenge with computer literacy will be able to have Chromebooks given to them for the classes. As long as they complete fifteen hours of training in those classes, they'll be able to keep the Chromebooks, take them home, and they're theirs permanently. They will also be offered by the East Tennessee Development District, one year of free IT support as well after that. It's still in its infancy stages of the procedure. I can give you a little more, a little bit later. So facilities, the major project over the summer was completed with the HVAC systems. At two points in the summer, the motherboard failed on the boiler, and we had two compressors fail on the chillers. I discussed in June that the library left changing from very cold to very hot. Things have since been a little more regulated, depending on whose office you go into. As of yesterday, we did have a new leak, which I emailed the board about. In the penthouse above the library, we had something, a mechanical part fail, which caused a little bit of a leak from the system. It was the best-case scenario. Facilities and IT staff immediately jumped in, saved the books, covered everything up. We had zero lost. We had no books lost. All of the, all of the wet spots where there was a leak has been dried in the large print area, and we've started to put all of the books back on the shelves. We only have one spot where you can see the water. It kind of buckled on the ceiling, and that's going to have to be replaced and dry-walled. And so we'll put those books back up once we have that all taken care of. I've also, we also had an email from a Ms. Deborah Dean from the East Tennessee Makers Market to discuss the inclusion of decorative cattails for the library. I've included that in your packet. She met with myself, and I had asked for her to give me a rendering of what she wants it to look like. This would be completely free. She'd like to raise the funding for donations. She'd like to use local artists in Blount County. The cattails themselves would be made of iron, and she would have local potters create decorative colored ceramic pots that would indicate the tops of the cattails. So this is in exploratory phases. We still don't know how many, the cost, where it would go. But I wanted to ask all of your permission to proceed with the plans for investigation.
Definitely. Is this a paid fundraiser?
It sounds like she is going to try and get the money from fundraising, yes.
To do this, but it's not fundraising through the library?
Correct. It would be an individual fundraising through her and her organization. Yeah.
The only concern I would have, Dustin, is the ceramic flowers that they're going to have over time, damage, and then maintenance appearance. So as they become damaged, how would there be, again, her funding, is she going to have some form of maintenance? Or would that fall to us and how that place, that would be all, but that ceramic with the winds we have did not last any longer.
That's a great question. I'll follow up with her on that.
Oh, but that'll all be on her, I'll ask.
She's supposed to, but then if she did maintain it, now you go, I'm not sure what just the metal things would like without those ceramic flowers, and that was okay, but.
Yeah. You might tell her that, you know, all maintenance and everything will be on her.
Okay.
That's why I leave this. I don't have any problems. Anybody else have any comments?
The only thing that I can say is that with my mother-in-law having been a potter before, if the, if, if what the pottery is on is sturdy enough, and if the iron is good and sturdy, then it may not, it may not wind up being a problem, problem at all. I think that's the, I think that's the one thing that we would have, would have to see. You're right about the, if, if it's, if, if the iron is not, is not strong, then it's going to be problematic. But if it's, if it's something like a lot of sculpture that I have seen previously, then it may, it may, maybe something that, that lasts longer than we think.
Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up with the board and express thoughts.
Is it permanent picture? Or is it something she, she wants to keep in place for time? Or would it be permanent to her landscaping?
She expressed the will for this to be a permanent. All right. Thank you. And that's all I have for my report.
Would you present anything of the financials? Is there?
It will be said, yeah. She'd be happy to represent the report.
I just had a few questions on that. So this, we're actually at FY twenty-five then, right?
No, we're in FY twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, that's.
Yeah, this is, this will be your twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so it says FY twenty-four appropriations.
I missed it. Thank you.
I had twenty-six, no question. And then, Dawn, this slide people. I understand your reports are from the budget, right?
From munis.
Yeah. So I just had a question, because it has on the breakout, it has contribution, it gives of eighty thousand, eighty dollars and fifty-two cents. And then down below, it says a finance assumption of eighty thousand, eighty dollars. And then there's a footnote that says the finance assumption will be the amount adjusted if revenues fall short. So I'm just wondering, okay, is that going to be an adjustment to fill the hole of the loss of revenue if it's less? Or is it an adjustment of the total appropriation going down?
So we're not going to apply any revenues to that line until all of other revenues have been met, because we didn't ask for that eighty thousand?
It's weird, again, at least I'm glad to see that that nine thousand dollars disappeared. Whoever could explain that?
Yeah.
But now they've.
Well, it was carried over from the previous year, but I could never get, yeah.
Okay, so that's just a, it seems to me like that's a placeholder. That's what we would call a placeholder?
Budget?
A fungible, fungible amount?
Yes.
On their books? Would that make sense, Dawn? Okay, and then, yeah, that's fine. The other, just an interesting note. So we've, it shows that we have on our, the revenues or collections amount, that the only collection so far, the library generated revenues of four thousand dollars. But I was just, how do you make payroll if you've collected enough money?
So again, so we have sent out quarterly funding requests.
Yeah.
And if they, the requests are out, and I think they'll just cover us. Your, all of your questions are good and correct and right. But we are, we are making payroll, and until the cities and the county move it over to the budget, it doesn't show up in munis. So I'm showing that to you because I'm not going to make the assumption.
Breakout, I mean, we're not in a, in a, in a, or anything like that. I didn't think so. I just thought it was odd.
Yes, it, it, it is, is odd.
Okay, and then lastly, when you're looking at the revenues, and it's got on the far right column, the percent, and we do that all the, a lot of times, and we straight-line it for simplicity, and I got that. But as far as the revenues go, they straight-line it. I was just wondering, is that's, a lot of these, like your capital, not, the straight lines oftentimes not a, because it comes in a lump sum type thing.
Wait, so I got confused. I thought we were looking at the revenue sheet, and then you mentioned capitals. So I'm not sure if I'm looking at the same thing.
Well, just when you're talking, when it comes in from the amount collected, I guess, I, I just don't know. That's just a good way of looking at that with straight line. If you're trying to analyze and match revenues and expenses, and then amounts expended to date, same thing with the.
So here's the thing, to date also for us is not real, because.
So I got that. I just want the column, when you look at the calculations embedded in, it's a straight-line calculation, which again is a very simple way to look at.
Yes.
If you're trying to do some predictive analysis in terms of, hey, where are we doing, how are we doing oftentimes?
Is there, would you like a different type of?
I think I'm going to go talk to the budget guy and see how they do it, and see what the purpose of that is. If they're not holding us accountable, then mocks next to me. Doesn't matter, I mean, right? But if they're going to be holding us accountable for our rates of expenditures and the rates of matching with our collections, then that's going to be some form of measuring tool for future budget decisions. And I'd say we better have a better way of analyzing it. Does that make sense? But if they're not, if they don't care, then I don't care. And, and, but then I say delete the column next to pointless. That's all good.
Would you consider if Dustin or I could attend with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Because this would be a learning situation for us as well.
Absolutely. That's all, sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you.
When you've got, like, we do it pre-getted.
Yeah.
Dump into kind of what we have, those are, I think those are fantastic questions to ask, because, you know, because this is one of those things where, you know, it just, sometimes just, just appears, and nobody much asks that much.
I know at the federal level, you, you really analyze under over execution because you're looking at justifying future budget authority. But if they're not using that as a metric, okay, do it how they want.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments on the financial aspects of this? Sounds like it covered it pretty good. Okay, let's move on to one of the foundations for evidence is not here. I don't know whether, like, say we've received the funding. It's, we have, is it, is it this Friday? Is this Friday, next Friday, the foundation meets?
I believe it's this Friday.
I think it is this, so we'll, we'll know more about, about that. They're, but they have a new group, the foundation, they're trying to get more corporate kind of gifts, as it were, the large gifts, and then the friends of the library that we'll get to here momentarily. They're concentrating more on the, creating, over-tempifying this. They're doing the more small sales of things. Now the foundation is going to concentrate on the larger Denso, the iconic, the multiple million dollars donations if they can get those. That's, that's what they're kind of focused on, so. More, more on that down with the leather. Okay. Both the friends of the library, and you are here in place of Vandy.
I am, yeah. Anne Nixon, I'm the vice president of the friends. So I'm sitting in for Vandy today. We've begun implementation of our recently adopted strategic plan. We're excited to move forward. Recently notified of getting a ten thousand dollar up-and-running grant. It's a national award to nonprofits who partner with eBay and provides funds to help, help other organizations develop similar fundraising programs. Really want to put a special congratulations out to Dee Baham for writing the grant and for her leadership in the Friends online sales program, which is really strong, a powerhouse. And we had a successful private sale for teachers a couple of weeks ago. We served ninety-four teachers, and we had like thirty tote bags and some, you know, goodies for their classrooms, and it was well-received. And our next sale is September fourth, from noon to six for members, that's that Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, the fifth and sixth, from ten to four, open to the public. And we hope to see you at the sales. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to Liz.
So Greg mentioned the trustee workshop. That's our big thing coming up. I've been working with him around the Bible. So a couple of y'all can come, hopefully some more. Great. We'll be talking about advocacy, and so I'm pretty excited about that. It's a good day. We've had some of the training opportunities for our library directors and staff as we kicked off this new fiscal year. Talk amongst your shelves, the annual public library survey that is coming out in September. That will be here before we know it. That is a huge undertaking for our library directors to report literally everything that happened in the past fiscal year. The number of staff they had, to the number of borrowers they had, library visits, electronic CIRC, all the things, to as much as they spent on audiobooks. It gets quite granular, so it's a lot of information. That will be open through the month of, the month of September. And it goes through a series of edit checks before it ends up at the federal level to report on all the great things our public libraries do, so. Who knows ahead of time?
Thank you.
If you have questions, obviously, we can help. That works as first time during it. It's got twelve parts, so. We are hosting a in-service this Friday about decoding digital, which is digital literacy training. So we're excited to have, thank you, Brandon Snyder, our assistant director, as well as Matthew Jordan, who is my colleague from Clint River Regional Library, to come and present on that. Let's see, just.
Is that available on one?
Yes, it is. Have you want, you want me to add you? Okay, I'll have Nikki send you the, just while I'm remembering. We are asking people to save the date. I know we just ended summer reading program, but there's no time like the present to look at what went right and what you're going to change. So we'll be hosting a summer reading conference, planning conference, and brand journey session in October here before we know it, too. We are, we've already circulated the library service agreement and the service area population. I have the annual maintenance of effort here for you all to take two funding bodies and get them to sign. So we're getting that circulated as well. We've released the first round of state funds for our libraries to spend against through our office. So we're going through that. Just offering trustee orientations, trustee certification program registration for folks. And we had a good meeting for trustee orientations, so thanks for taking the time to do that. Um, let's see, I do want to present, since I mentioned online training. I have certificates for Robert White and for Becca. I'll bring those to you. We won't pass them down. Thank you for taking the time to complete that. I also sent you all the, the monthly reads, circulation statistics, which is the CIRC for all the digital materials that go through Overdrive for our statewide consortia and local material materials. So you can see where we are with that. And then the final document that I presented to you all was the support rankings worksheet. And we, our state data coordinator presents us with this every year, so this is something you'll get every year. So if you, well, if you think you've seen it before, you have, if you've been here for a while. What this basically does is this takes the information about funding appropriations and expenditures for, from the maintenance of effort agreements statewide. And then we take the population and income per capita, and we rank the counties from one to nine, ninety-five, of course, based on income capability. And then in the next section of columns, the local funding that is given for the operation of public libraries per county, as well as appropriation per capita. And we rank the counties from one to ninety-five in those efforts. And what you basically want to see between income rank and appropriation per capita rank is the balance there. So that local funding dollars that are available are going to help find library services in the county. So that would be, that's everybody for, for all the funding bodies for every county, not just per capita, for the cities. That's for the whole county as a metric unit. That was easiest.
Hey, Liz, so ours is nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Last column, that's your income range.
Yes.
So what did that mean?
It means you are the, you, the county has the eleventh most, well, the eleventh wealthiest county.
In, in the state?
Mm-hmm, and then ranked nineteenth in terms of appropriations for library services.
So ideally, it should be, yeah.
In a.
Ideally, yeah.
But that's pretty close. That's, that's a pretty, there's not a huge disparity.
But seemingly, it wasn't bad.
Right, and that's what you want to see. Yeah, we want to see that. Really pretty close, so that's pretty good.
Okay, Liz, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to all business. We have a conflict of interest policy, which I think is we quit all that out last time. This is one of the, we love to pursue this, right?
This is the final product while I write on for it.
This is something we all need to sign. Is this done each yearly?
I believe it's for two years. Is that right, Summers?
Clear, clear off.
Is it yearly? Okay.
So it marked up something.
Anyway. What's the policy state? Open policy does yearly, but so you start to sign it up.
Maybe every term? Is it every term? Because I think it is every term.
So it's certified policies.
Sure.
Policy, I think it's, it's pleasant one-time annual, and that's because every year it's just a nice reminder to say, hey, if you have a conflict, this is a good opportunity to let us know now. The review of the policy shouldn't be annual, but every year, the board member should sign.
Some, some members don't stay the whole term. They have to. Some of them cross sixty, they're all in the reading. What'd you say, James? Cross six.
That says they have to disclose. And so at any time, if the situation would change, it's the last signature, they'd have to do another one to disclose a new. That says they have to disclose, and so at any time if the situation would change, it's the last signature, they'd have to do another one to disclose a new conflict.
Yes.
Uh uh as far as initial, I don't see where it said. Which actually brings me, uh and I brought this up before, I think it would really help if we would standardize format for our policies. Uh there is no, I mean, just in these that we're looking at now, there is no form function to any of them. And I think a standardized format in the policy would aid in effect in ensuring. When you look at policy things, the first barrier is the reason for the policy and just that alone would. Allow us to look, okay, is there a sufficient reason to justify this or is it just more bureaucratic morass that everybody ignores? So that, so but then a policy statement, the scope definitions and having. A succinct format that would allow us to go through and would make things, I think, add some clarity.
Yeah, it sounds like template.
I mean, you can pick any of, I do, but I mean, there's a lot of templates that you could pick from and some are more exhaustive than others, but. Having a standard uh format as we review of it would really make it, your eyes would go to certain places at one time.
Please just to stay, have any kind of.
We do not have plenty of examples of um policies to be, but to be honest. I usually use you all as an example.
And I have to admit, they, they used to, but with each leadership change, we can get out of the format and they get back in. Cause the one at the beginning looks more in line with the one, the the third one, so we can go back to that if if you'll let us know what.
It's the same construction, all your specifications.
Exactly, I know exactly where to plug for.
That makes, I'm all about that.
Yeah.
If someone wants to take that on.
I can, I mean, I can get with Dustin or Anthony or Summer, I mean, again, you pick your poison, but. I think it's important to have a standardized format and as a minimum, the purpose statement in my, when I was reviewing. Litany of policies, when I look at that purpose statement, it would allow me to like, okay, why are we really doing?
Yeah.
That they need, and if not, you can eliminate. The other one is in enforcement, okay, so what? There's a policy in here as far as uh the conduct policy. Or the, scratch that, the circulation of library materials policy, that has, it's not listed enforcement, but there's enforcement. Works into it, but there's, most of should be, okay, so what? What if we don't sign this conflict interest policy? And so I think that's another important. Format to have within a policy to stipulate, okay, there should, if you're, if it's important enough to have policy, there should be important enough to have. Consequences for not compliance.
Um that might be harder for a library environment because we're not. I mean, there, there's policies and if you don't break them, it usually revokes you of privilege, you don't want to come across using punitive.
No, it's not punitive, just saying, some of them could, some of them are negative, some of them are just said, the, the, what's the purpose of it, it's informing.
Yes.
Okay, well, as information, well then. It really would not be, and you'd still have a paragraph for enforcement saying, hey, informational.
Okay.
So these, your eyes would be drawn to it, you'd know where to look at.
Thank you.
So does that mean games? Proving this policy as a group, or should we wait until?
No, I think as you go through and and do it as you revise them. So I would recommend anyway, as opposed to, I mean, sometimes you have a complete policy overall and. Dustin, that might be something you want to do, since you have a new director, you're coming into a whole policy review, I don't know. Your prerogative, but otherwise I'd say as we see these policies, but I think it would be important to come up with a format. So that's in short order, we can be, as we review these policies and renew them.
Implement them on a case by case.
Okay, certainly, we'll be happy to investigate it more. I do know that some policies in here. Do have some type of component with state legislation because.
Correct.
Um in doing the policy, there's certain ones that's, that say um. You were required to review such and such policies every year, every two years, but. I would be happy to investigate that more, I don't know which policies are required by the state and which are not at this time.
And actually, that's another paragraph that's in a template, it would say applicable procedures, applicable laws, applicable statutes, and you can list those. And and hyperlink them, so you know, if anyone is really interested, dig it in, you can see what those laws are. Uh so that would be, again, good reason for formatting, because you would have that on there to show that. And that's, again, at the federal level, we call that nesting, you have to have, if you're gonna have a, a, or a, a department policy, it has to be nested. And not conflict with a, at a higher level of policy, and so you have those listed on there.
I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense, but I will say that in the past, we have tried to do that. And it's just as things change, sometimes that per, that actual policy being written. Changed a little bit too, but what you're saying makes a lot of sense and leaves.
Yeah, the policy can change, but the format should remain.
Just choose the format and stick with it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this policy.
Who do we turn that into?
Sorry.
Who do we turn that policy into? When we sign it?
This will go into the file, I think.
Okay.
You take them from them.
There's a second, any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. Most of the kids, so we're gonna put this one for bed. New business and we have a code of ethics policy. All of us reprobates who are may or may not be ethical, anyway, there's a lot of red on this one, so you can read that. Z through here, this is just for review at this point, so it'll, it'll be updated with comments, questions, and then we'll vote on it perhaps next time.
And cheer break will for most of this, in essence, it is uh mainly for the two-year revisions. And uh I would say, I, I think pretty much everything was. Substance as far as punctuation and formatting to give us an updated uh logo. Rework things for better clarity, so that was the main breadth of the adjustments on this.
Okay. So that's. That, that is the way it is at this point. Should be a formal one to review and vote on at our next meeting.
Correct.
So should we submit comments to you somewhere, we asked them?
I think that's what I was, rather than ask, rather than trying to get into weeds here as a group.
Right.
Just read through it, submit questions and then I can.
Just upfront, it's, it's for both, or policies that like that.
Yeah, yeah. Then the next one is a rules of conduct policy. So not run with scissors, thanks, but.
So again, with this one, um most of it was just punctuation and formatting for substance. There was one addition uh that I had requested to be included. My apologies, we did not have this sentence prior, so the scribbled out portion is incorrect. Um the use of alcohol or any other intoxicating substance, uh previously we'd only had intoxication or disorderly conduct. And I wanted to specifically verify that there should be no alcohol or other intoxicating substances in the library.
Just a curiosity question, is this posted somewhere?
Yes.
And that would also came to meetings and events. Alcohol use.
That's in the. Yeah, it's in the public usage policy.
That's Richard said, we want.
Well, we have, and addressed how the, how, what they did there. Um kind of married up with, with the code of conduct, so that was something.
What, which, which friends are you talking about?
Just that we, we did it in fact, but when the gala happened, that was. It was all, but everything here that we've had is, has comported with, with everything else. Which has worked with. Yeah, but so, so again, if you have any late night comments, you can email those to someone, we'll have this prepared for next time. And then let's see, next on the, oh, we have a circulation of library policy. This one's gonna love it, I'm gonna need it.
So for the majority of this, this is again, uh just to make it more legible. There were two substantive changes in this that we uh would like to ask the board to consider. Uh one specific is that we'd like to increase the checkout limits. Um we feel that some of the items, especially the uh CDs, DVDs. They're at a point where the mediums just aren't as popular as they used to be, so we'd like to increase the circulation to help bolster the circulation. Uh we also felt the same way about the books, right now with physical to electronic, we'd like to increase our digital numbers. Or I'm sorry, our physical numbers for checkout, um so that was the main bread and butter for that. Uh and we did not touch the hotspots on purpose. The second big portion that was revisited was um. We would like to include a requirement that any item that is returned with vermin or evidence of vermin. Um must produce a receipt to show evidence that they've cleaned the house or cleaned the area that contained the vermin. Um there's been some situations in the past where items have been returned that have had some contact with that. And we'd like to make sure that if they pay the fine, um we don't then return, get, get other items returned. In a similar kind of situation to that, we'd like to show some evidence of work that's been done on their part for the good of everyone.
I agree with that, though, can we do that legally, require them to have a coordinator go to their house?
Yes, um because of. Because of where, what our standing is in, as part of, of the county and the, and the services that we provide. We can authorize or, or we can, can mandate. That people have to, have to bring back our materials in, not only in good condition, but rather. But also to ensure that, you know, the, these patrons will um comply with what we've got. What our dictates are going forward, um and it's through. The exceptions that they put down in parts of Tennessee law, public safety and public health. Those have been expanded a lot over the last ten or twelve, ten or twelve years, so things that they couldn't do previously. Or couldn't mandate previously. Because we're a public entity, we can, we can mandate those more than if we were a private, a private business or private concern. So uh so that's one of those things that, yes, yes, we can, yes, we can do it. Then, but I'm not, I'm not, I mean, other than, other than revoking somebody's. Um library privileges, I don't know that there's much that we could, we can do on, on the other, on the other end, but. You know, for a lot of folks, that's, it's enough of an oof to have them, you know, have them show that everything's. Yeah, last thing we want is to have silverfish or ratchets or whatever.
That's, that's there, and plus Dustin, what's the, how are you gonna track that? I mean, is there a way for a staff? Say somebody turns in a book and it's got stuff on it. Are they gonna put something in the computer so that when they come the next time trying to take something out, they're somewhat flagged on their record?
They'll have, they'll have to provide the, the receipt.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and there are ways that, cause I know that happened more in the past than it does now, but a lot of times in court where you'd have somebody. Who would in traffic court hit a um. A fence owned by the city or the county or a power pole or um a guard rail, they had certain, there were certain places where. Where they, where you could provide a receipt that you've, you know, uncared the repair.
I was looking at from, from our circulation desk, the, the staff, is this gonna be a, a, a. An additional burden on them or is it a simple keystroke, is there a place on the computer thing to flag that and so they know?
Currently, if there's ever any suspected evidence of infestation, the item is quarantined and contained and removed.
Yeah, yeah.
And then um any evidence of such, we then note the account and do all that, so the only additional item. Would be to require evidence of the receipt, uh as opposed to um paying off the, the late fee, or the balance.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned again with it, I've had a, I possibly confrontation, somebody come up to check out a book and the, and the. Or is it, hey, you gotta provide me a receipt that your home was exterminated and now.
Would you send a letter notifying the patron, on, on other circumstances, we'd do that, we'll send a letter to the patron that says.
Yeah, good.
We found evidence of this, please, you know, on return, do this.
I'm sorry for being slow on the uptake, that's, I was just.
Questions, cause I was wondering the second thing, because, and another thing, we don't want to create one more thing. For our people to have to do, you know, if it's a pretty easy fix, then yes, by all means, let's do that, but. You don't need one more thing to have to do, you have enough to do as it is, so.
And in these instances, it is noticeable.
Gotcha.
But as soon as it's noticed, we're reaching back out to the patrons, so it's not like three weeks have gone by or something like that.
And also, this instance specifically is so rare that it, I don't believe that it would create a burden on the staff.
That would, that was not concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks goodness.
Yeah.
So we've got to generate, I mean, I'm just thinking now simplicity, so if this comes up, they check in a book, is there something, they go and have an automated letter? And then all the letters generated, they turn it over to you for signature, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm just not sure.
No, typically, um any situation where there's suspected evidence of that, the circulation manager would then make contact through via a phone call. Um if we can't reach them, some type of correspondence like, such as a letter or, or any, yes.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so this will be dressed up and be out for both of them. The next item is the building closure schedule, this is a draft calendar, closing for twenty twenty six.
Why, why do we have, I'm just curious, and I, I can't find um. What the courthouse closures are for twenty twenty six, so that was my, this is my question. Um the Christmas holidays, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I know you all open back up on Saturday. But why are we doing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
So, sure, um it does look like the courthouse is closed for Wednesday, Thursday.
See, I couldn't find it on the website, so that's why I was asking, and if that's the case, then by all means.
The courthouse is automatically closed on Saturday.
Right, yeah.
This, isn't this the first time to be, we only had three days and um not. Have the day after Christmas off?
This will be the first time that we haven't had the day after Christmas off, but. Last year, there were, I think it, I'm not a hundred percent sure, last year, we somehow managed four days off.
Right, because the courthouse substitute, like Columbus Day or something and got an extra day at Christmas. They didn't take, they don't ever take Columbus Day. And they always substitute that for another day. Of course, you all don't take Columbus Day either, because that's the same thing the courthouse does, so.
I actually think they, some years what gets substituted is Black Friday.
Which we, the library is closed on Black Friday. Half half day Wednesday, evening Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then they open back up on Saturday. Well, let me ask you this, ladies and gentlemen. Would you rather have that Wednesday or would you rather have Saturday? The day after Christmas?
I personally would not be opposed to Saturday.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, if if we're looking at this and we're studying this and the courthouse is gonna be closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then. If you all wanted to substitute the Saturday instead of the Wednesday, I mean, I don't know what what everybody else's thoughts.
One consideration is if you have, if we have staff who wanna be with their family and their family isn't local. They have no time, that they can't stay Saturday night, so that means they're driving Christmas back. So having that Saturday off means they could leave the next morning. And I think that would probably be of more value to them than the Wednesday.
What are your thoughts? I mean, why, why can't we flip-flop that Wednesday and that Saturday?
I totally agree. I think the day after Christmas is very important to staff.
I agree. Summer, I mean, I think I think. Well, it's difficult with the staff.
On Christmas.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I definitely think the staff would.
Do what, Sean?
I think Boxing Day is far, people think of it a whole lot, a whole lot, whether they do it the twenty third or the Christmas.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
British roots coming.
That's right, British roots. Um, so I mean, I. I'm just putting that out there. If y'all wanted to substitute that Wednesday for the Saturday.
Melinda? Sorry, is it okay if I speak?
Yes.
Please.
Mr. Fisher, I think in the past, we would get a certain number of days or holidays. And uh at Christmas and the courthouse would too. The courthouse is not normally open on Saturday, so they get Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We are open on Saturday, but. But that, but only a part of the staff would be working on Saturday. So in a sense, we would get two Christmas holiday days. And others wouldn't get a third. Does am I making any sense? I I think. Um, you know, if the, if we take the Saturday off. That means that, you know, a large portion of the staff only gets two holidays.
Two days off for Christmas, does that, does that makes?
I think, I'm wondering if that's why they did the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that way, so that every member of the staff would have three holidays.
Is is that, I think for us, it's the same, because we're open seven days a week. And our part-time people would usually have to adjust their schedules to get their hours. It's not strong.
Yeah.
And then the full-time people who are working Monday through Friday, they're still experiencing what they're experiencing. So the holiday pay is something that we could go back and say, instead of that Monday, we'd like it to apply to that Saturday.
Yeah, this is making sense, what I'm saying about the number of like paid.
You'd still get paid for three days if you're an hourly forty or full-time person. If you're a part-time person, it still makes no difference what days they are.
But same amount of hours.
Yes, the same amount of hours.
But which? Ah. Anyway, I, what I'm saying is the full-time people who would normally get three holidays, who are not scheduled to work on that Saturday. You know, two paid holidays.
Because they usually get Saturday off.
Usually get Saturday off anyway. So in other words, that's just their Saturday off.
That's just too.
But they're not getting a holiday.
You're still getting Fridays, Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, but.
And they still get paid, oh, but that Monday.
I'm not explaining that well, but.
Yeah, no, no, I think I'm getting what you're saying.
So if somebody would, if somebody would get, were to get paid for a Saturday holiday.
They have to be.
They would have to take off one of the three days to justify the three holidays. Otherwise, you would have.
Push longer budget.
Forty-eight hours of of time on the paycheck.
So.
So with the rest of the schedule, um, everything follows the courthouse closers with the exception of um. The courthouse has only Good Friday off and we're requesting Friday through Sunday for Easter. Um, and then uh the courthouse is recognizing July third. And we request to be closed Friday, July third and Saturday, July fourth.
And that's a port because the courthouse is already closed on those days.
Correct.
Um, so.
But that then creates the same problem that Ms. Willinda brought out on the Saturday. For the full-time people.
Well, we would. We can make the payroll, yeah, work.
That's, I mean, I know it, I know how your system works, so, but I know in other lives that I've had. I would have the latitude. So in that example, if someone works Saturday, I'd give them Wednesday off.
Yes, that's exactly.
Oh, do y'all have that latitude?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's a no-brainer.
Okay, yeah.
The official pro closure time is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then y'all can work the scheduling to give those who work Saturday, give them Wednesday.
Sure.
But I still think the open on Saturday, people have to travel and. Down Christmas.
Oh, yeah.
Just as.
So we didn't motion, I guess I didn't take a motion to approve this, what might be the.
I I I want us to reminisce on this. I want you all. To talk to your people.
Yeah.
And I wanna, I wanna. Yes, cuz I don't wanna cause anybody any heartache or stress or any extra work or anything like that. Like maybe we call somebody in HR, maybe we, you know, you, and just basically talk to your people.
That's, that's.
You know, talk to your library people and see what what are their feelings about that. Um, I mean, I know if it were me, I would want that day afterwards.
Right.
Because I gotta recuperate from what's happened to them. You know, I gotta, I gotta get away from my family for a bit, by myself. So, uh, why, can we just?
We will, it's time to. Table this.
Is that okay?
Table.
And discuss it, staff. Let's see, the next item is. Request for a year. Strategic directions timeline facilitator, which is all this little.
Sorry.
For field finding out is. This is for the prudes, this is for.
No, this is for us?
This is for us, okay.
Yes, um.
Oh, it's.
Wait, the the friends are funding.
The friends are, yes, we're.
Your funding.
So in June, um, the board requested uh. A timeline essentially for the completion of a strategic plan. And um, the proposed plan which out, that I have uh given to all of you, hopefully outlines that a completion date no later than February. Um, I've collected data from meetings and surveys from staff, managers, elected officials, organizations and other members. Um, we're at the point now where we've figured out similar topics of conversation with every group. The management team has been discuss uh discussing it, the admin group, um, all of the staff. In fact, currently I have a couple of photos that I'd like to pass out where we've been discussing strategic topics. To allow for both anonymous conversation with the staff to bring up ideas as well as uh. Formular uh uh delegates essentially that we're going to be going over in meetings. Um, I have spoken with the facilitator that's willing to assist us in fleshing out these topics. And uh, we're hoping to be able to create an implementation plan and a scope. Um, with your assistance with the facilitator. Ms. Maylie Galian, she came to me recommended for her skills in strategic planning. She's the former HR manager for Massey Electric and the former assistant principal for Johnson County Schools. She's currently a strategic consultant and speaker for Turning Up, uh Turn It Up Consulting. Has been in that role for since twenty nineteen. Um, she and I met and we have negotiated a price of four half-day sessions at the cost of five hundred dollars per session. But the first session would help us to gather the topics that we've been discussing and coming up with. To solidify it into more of a role of maybe two, three topics to hone in on. And the remaining three topics would be the discussion for an implementation plan which surrounds those topics. Um, I've spoken to the friends and I would like to request your approval to. Allow them to help provide the funds for four half-day sessions of uh a total of two thousand dollars. Yes, ma'am.
Let's do it. I make the motion that we uh pass this on to the friends.
Oh, sure.
Second.
Any further discussion? The motion carries and we will proceed.
Hey, Dustin, who's on your strategic planning team?
Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor of this?
Yeah, sorry.
Lost my head. And opposed? Okay, motion carries then. And and I have no Maylie personally suspicious, sorry. Okay, okay. And I know Maylie personally, her son, Crowley, is actually on the foundation pool.
Yes.
Yes, she's, she's a great lady, so.
The committee of the um, people on the planning team right now, I have the management staff, um, the PR team. Myself, Summer, Angene, as well as three specific staff delegates, one from each of the major departments, patron services. Um, reference and childrens.
Good. Uh, let's see, then finally for new business, we have open the library for teen prom homecoming program. Well, that's.
So when is, when is this? Um, it's November fourteenth.
Okay.
So. Um. It's a Friday, I believe, correct? Yes.
We did that last year.
I'm sorry?
What is it?
So essentially, the children's department would like to create a s- a school dance of sorts. Um, a lot of the people in the TAP department and in the teens group are homeschooled and don't have the opportunity. It was actually a discussion of the topic they brought up. And so we're hoping to be able to put it together. There's going to be a sign-in and registration. Um, we are going to require the registration, so we know how many to staff, and so we have enough chaperones. Um. I've heard about some uh journals, stickers, books, a raffle, a book care package. And potentially Taylor Swift and Pink Pop.
The others will be here for it?
I wish, yeah.
I'm clearly all your staff.
Um, we would.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
The library, uh, the teens would be asked to leave, the program would end no later than eight-thirties, the the staff would go home by nine o'clock after cleanup.
I move that we open the library for the teen prom homecoming program. I think that's great. Second.
I would like to ask more questions, but sort of said that we did it last year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and where was it? Where did it take place?
Uh.
I think. The prom is different from the silence, the silent disco. The silent disco is the one we did live air. This is.
This is something brand new, okay? And it's, so it's teen prom slash homecoming?
Uh, yeah, I don't.
What what makes it homecoming? Just like something for homeschool kids, that they don't have a homecoming program, they don't have a prom, so this is something for that? Is that what that is?
Exactly. It was made, it was meant to kind of showcase what the intention was about the program.
We have a second, need further discussion, more questions?
I kind of like to see something about it. Be curious to see. It it's open to homeschool kids, open to all kids, open to, I don't know. I'm I'd be curious to see more information about it.
Oh, we'd definitely be open to anyone. I mean, um, in fact, I would love to have as much participation as possible. We would probably cap it at no more than. Uh, twenty-five to thirty-five teens, just so we're not overwhelmed. I would be very surprised, honestly, if we received more than twenty-five teens.
Sure.
Um, but certainly that whenever we'll put out the registration, we wouldn't put it out just to specific groups. It would be for everyone.
You have, say, could you prepare a little descriptive form or something about?
Yes, sir.
Send that out.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, uh. Ready for votes? All those in favor of this project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, that that carries, so we will have. Everybody here in your prom dress, I know that. That concludes our new business. The, there's some dates at the bottom, which you can see, one's not listed.
We got one more.
Got one red.
Not a long table.
Teen. Oh, the library had additional hour for long table last, last one.
Oh, sorry, we had a last minute, missed that. Sorry about that. Okay. Open the library for an additional hour for the long table event.
When is the long table?
It's October sixteenth from five to nine P M. And so uh Discover Blunts has requested the uh availability of the restrooms for the event. So that would be essentially the only area that we would be opening up for the public.
This main hallway right here? Which restroom is the?
It's uh, since the um.
On the, on the bridge is where it takes place.
Gotcha, do that, I do that. So you all would have to be up until, somebody would have to be here till nine.
Yes, we would have one staff member that would just help to escort members to the bathrooms or two.
I started saying, can we have two?
Yes.
For a second, you students?
Mm-hmm.
I'd say for anybody to be here by themselves, thinking about today's times and things that happen.
Okay.
So let's request two, please, if you don't care.
Will staff be here? Will there be any staff to regulate things inside the library?
Um, Chelsea Mathenia has already volunteered, um, so she would be on hand, our hospitality services coordinator.
Yeah.
And so we can have a.
Actually, anyone can come in, not just long days or purpose events. I'm just trying to think possibilities.
It, yeah. Most that would probably come in through the through back.
Through that back porch.
And the people that are gonna be at long table are.
Here.
Yeah.
Uh, my my wife, my wife Robbie, Robbie are not only in trouble makers.
No, no, but.
But the, but it, and and.
I mean, having a bathroom is great.
Right, but in 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 times in the other years that they've had it. Because of the numbers of people and the presence there, a lot of the people who might. Be, you know, sort of bad actors have tended to stay to stay away from it mainly because it's, I mean, there's. Gonna be several hundred people there, so there are a lot of pairs of eyes.
Sure, and it won't, it won't be open. The doors will probably be banned and locked until someone tries to come in, so they see someone approaching.
Right.
And then, so, so it won't be a gate, there will be a gate.
Or, yes, it's on.
Otherwise, it's too, too.
Otherwise, it's too, yeah, yeah. That sounds great, though.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Hey, let's see, we had a second, I think. Ready to vote on this? All in favor to uh? We have a second. We, so, I I'm sure that we even had a.
I don't know that we would have a motion.
I move that we, that we keep, that we open up the bathrooms for long.
I will second that.
And we need to add the two personnel to to guard the door.
Yeah.
To have that.
I think just.
Four more questions. Did we do this last year? The long table? Okay, so we've never had bathrooms for long table? Gotcha.
And it's not, not after hours. We have, we have, we have partnered with them before they've had access to our bathrooms, but at that stage, we closed at nine o'clock.
Okay.
We now close it, no, 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 at that stage, we were still open till.
Till nine.
Till nine.
Yeah.
And then our hours change.
Yes.
And now that.
Yes.
So we'll be open, so are we open from eight to nine? And now that, so we'll be open, so are we open from eight to nine or eight to ten? What is the extra hour?
At the long table events until nine P M.
So till nine?
So we'll be open until nine.
Okay.
I think it's a great way to partner with them.
Open to everybody? The library is open or just?
No, just the back.
Just they had, for the next.
Yeah.
So we had a motion and a second, correct?
Right, yes.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we will have a long table event as described. Now then, important dates for coming up, uh, Friday is the foundation meeting, that's not listed on, you know, I'll, I'll attend that one. And that's something I'd like to be here at eight o'clock Friday morning.
That'll work for me.
Those are in and out pretty quick, um, county commission.
I'll attend that.
Friends of the library, somebody would like to go to the friends of the library.
On the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Let's see.
I've got prison ministry that.
If not, I can do that.
You think I'll work the last commercial? I'll be in the Moore County branch, so.
Should I let you go?
I've been sorry to hear that.
Let you go.
Then we have a foundation, another foundation, the foundation for not, the September nineteenth. September second, mayor council meeting. And then Board of Commissioners, I think, uh, Dexter will go to that one. And our meeting will be September sixteenth. So, anybody have anything else?
Yeah, the only thing I have this is, I guess for summer would be my needles. Um, on the October meeting, I'll be out of town, it's our annual public finish training conference. So I'll be, I'll be in Murphy's residence instead of here.
Thank you, Sean.
See you tomorrow.
So, if nothing further, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Promised.
Say it.
Say it.
Those in favor, stand up.